I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order if everyone would please. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
This is Casper. Here. Mr. Level.
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Parnell. Mrs. Schaefer.
Here. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
A discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Parnell, or no, I'm sorry, Mr. Level?
Yes.
Sorry, Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
I'd just like to wish Linda a happy birthday. She had her birthday on Sunday, so I'm sure she was sorry she wasn't here celebrating with us today. It wasn't today. So, that's all I have. Superintendent's comments, Matt?
Just real quick, just to thank the school board for everyone attending the community foundation on Saturday. That was a great event and I think we represented the district well.
Thank you. Chairperson's comments, Jenny?
None at this time.
All right, then we'll get to move right to our presentation, which is the Lakota West Marching Band and their new uniforms. If you'd like to come forward.
We need background music.
I know.
Before drum majors, there are the student conductors and student leaders. Kayden was also in the band. He was going to be here to celebrate something else. So, hey, we have uniforms. So, we got one more. These are, we replace our uniforms usually three, six, or seven years until they take a lot of use. And then, we purchased these from FAM. And they're actually purchased by the band boosters. It was all donated, all donated money from fundraiser. The primary way we do it is tag day. So, if you live in Westchester, hopefully we just knock on the door. And we love this fundraiser because there's, we don't sell you anything. We're just saying, hey, the band kids work hard and we'd love to have some support for you and we do really well. So, that money goes towards these uniforms. So, the band boosters purchased them. They're going to get donated to the school board as soon as the final receipts come back in. But we got to wear them for the first time on Friday. There's a couple pictures of them in action. We thought they looked pretty good and we were pretty happy with them. One of the things that's very cool about this uniform is, I just want you to take the vest off, that the, get some help, that the shirt underneath can be changed. And you can make it specific to an event, or you can change it. So, actually, we're not going to wear the red for our competitive show. We're going to wear something that matches the show, the color of the show. And so, we can get these made specifically and then we put in these different colored plumes as well. So, this is probably the one we're going to use for normal. This is our drum majors' uniforms, which are all black. And then, you have a, the red and silver, which really represents a lot of the West colors very well. So, we're pretty happy with how everything turned out. And the, this version of uniform is a little bit easier to move around in than our previous ones, which really allows the level of detailing that our students are asked to do in the competitive shows to move around in different ways. They're not just marching, which is kind of in fashion right now in the marching band world. So, we just wanted to show some off to you and thank the community as a whole because these are donated through the very generous giving of all people. That was all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and I also read that these were machine washable. So, they'll be able to save lots of money in the long run with not having to dry clean everything all the time, too.
There you go.
Wow.
That's a lot.
Wow.
They, they look really good. They sounded really good Friday night, so, thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. All right, now we have the student spotlight. Betsy?
Good evening. Each year Lakota schools participates in the Westchester Liberty Chamber Alliance's Business Expo. And the summer was even more exciting because it was held at Lakota West High School. So, the expo is an opportunity for us to showcase some of the innovative learning that occurs inside of our classrooms. This year Lauren Betcher from my department had the great idea to showcase some of our technology that students are using every day in our new innovation hubs. With this year's theme, Staycation, Lauren tapped into Kayden Shirk and Ben Simpson's creativity with the idea of inviting our community to visit iconic locations around town through the wonder of virtual reality. Behind you, Todd is helping you see some of the, some of the locations. That's the VOA museum. Kayden and Ben went above and beyond our expectations tackling a 360 camera to create four different tours. So, to tell you more, please welcome Kayden and Ben.
So, basically, Mrs. Betcher called on us to use some of our technology skills for these tours right here. So, I created this one through Google Tour Builder. And this was featured on Google Cardboard, which is in all of the schools in Lakota. And we also have the ability to view it through Poly, which is an application through Google that you can just view on the computer and kind of scroll around. And then Kayden, I'll let him talk to you about what he used to create his tours.
So, for my tours, I did a guided narration of both the library and the Boys and Girls Club of Westchester. For these, we recorded 360 videos and I edited them together in Adobe Premiere along with audio narrate, narration done by Carrie Hillman, who's the public relations director at the library and the art director of the Boys and Girls Club. For these, we just went in. We wanted natural looking scenes, so everybody would see when they viewed them, what happened on a day-to-day basis. On these, you can view them on any 360 degree video device such as an Oculus Go like we had at the Westchester Chamber of Commerce Business Expo and the Google Cardboards, all of which are available in, at all of the schools. They can also be viewed on the computer and on your phone. So, you can like tilt your phones around and see the 360 view.
How long did these take?
We spent about three weeks.
Three, four weeks?
Planning, taking the video and stringing everything together. About three weeks for me to edit it, too.
Wow.
It's incredible.
Yeah.
That's really incredible.
That is incredible. I know we got great feedback from the Chamber Alliance that everyone really appreciated the hard work that you all did. We also had another display where people could take pictures on the green screen with different things around Lakota. And that was also another neat project that the kids had helped with. What did you learn from it?
We learned a lot about recording 360 video, how to manipulate it and edit them together along with 360 photos. I got a more in-depth look at Adobe Premiere from my point of view in splicing videos, changing where, for like the, where somebody looks and it's the home position. So, where they start up on the screen, it starts in one position instead of somewhere else in the 360 video. That was a lot of work, actually. But, and also splicing around narration.
I think I just got a better understanding of how Google Tour Builder works and how to use the 360 cameras to create educational videos for the betterment of the community.
Do either of you have an interest in pursuing something like this in college?
I do not, actually.
Not after that, huh?
I mean, sort of, but also it's not a major factor in what I want to pursue in the future, too.
I guess you could use it in different areas.
Yeah, another.
I feel like it's going to be a lot more involved in the future with how society progresses. And it's a valuable skill, I guess, to learn in order to move along as we evolve.
Great job. Questions or thoughts? Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here and sharing that with us. Want to join us up front? We can give you this and take a photo. All right, and now we'll move on to our staff spotlight.
I will do that up here. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Just, our next presentation is going to be for our staff, for our staff spotlight. I'd like to welcome up to the podium Poe Refit, who's a special education teacher in the district, Tina Pratt, who's our behavior specialist, and Lori Jones, who's a health teacher in the district as well. These three individuals helped to write Ohio's new social and emotional learning standards, which has been a huge push for us in our district, but also across the state of Ohio. Just thrilled that the three of them were able to write the standards, help write the standards for the state and that Lakota had three representatives in Columbus doing that. Each of them were selected to represent a different grade band. And there were about 60 standards per grade, grade band level, easy for me to say. And there were also, I believe, five different competencies: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. All key factors in things that we're doing in the district. I'm going to turn, did you guys practice who's going to talk and who's going to do what? Good, all right, good. So, I'm going to let, if you guys just don't mind talking about the process a little bit, what you did and kind of where we go from here.
Just real briefly, though, right?
All right, well, I appreciate you saying all that for us because we were like, okay, we've got to remember all what those were. When you're in it and you're worried about the actual standards, you know, we, honestly, I don't know, I think we could all say this together, but when we received the information if we would like to help write these, we had to kind of apply and send like credentials and then have our principals or whatever, you know, support us. And then they picked from a group of people. So, out of over, I don't know, 100 and some applicants, I think they came up with, what, 80? Am I wrong? I don't know. It was a small, small group. And so, I have heard that Lakota was the only school district in Ohio that had three representations. So, that, that was nice. And Tina Poe and I didn't know we were even, they, you know, once we got there, we saw these three names with Lakota School District and we found each other out. And I was the middle school, represented middle school, and Poe represented high school and Tina represented elementary. So, we've, you know, were able to work with the, from K through 12, coming up with standards. And basically, what I felt about it is when I was, got this letter, I didn't have to think but two seconds, well, yes, of course, if I could, you know, somehow be a part of this, you know. I teach health, so my passion is the whole child and that's just in me. So, to have this opportunity to help, you know, support our state in, in helping teachers have a guideline to follow, I just jumped to the chance. So, I was very excited to have the opportunity.
So, I remember getting the email, I think it was the September 2017. And that's when the application process began. And to me, it was a no-brainer. I'm a mother of four, two children, who have social anxiety issues. This was like, why aren't we doing this already? Especially when I'm working in the high school setting and I'm seeing all these kids come in with social anxiety and the inability to resolve conflicts and things like that. And I'm like, this is a no-brainer. We need this. And it's not a case of whether I wanted to. This was, I needed to be a part of this. So, I committed to going through, to every single session. I don't think there was, I missed a single session. We worked all the way into, I think, was it August? August 2018. So, that was into my summer. I was already working ESY. My kids were like at home and they're like, where's mom? She's gone for the day. She's up in Columbus. I offered to take them up there, but they're like, no, you go on your own. So, I'm glad I did it. The drives up and back down gave me an opportunity to think about the work that we were doing and like, you know, what we could do to improve it when we came to the writing. So, I'm like really, really ecstatic that we're adopting these standards in Ohio. And that means that will benefit all the children in Ohio, so.
I've got, got two side notes. I have an eight-year-old who would love to learn how to do those 360 videos. He was pretty excited about that and, you know, he's going to hide. And what a great opportunity, I think, from the behavior standpoint, from kids with anxiety, if they could do school tours virtually before actually stepping foot into the school would help reduce anxiety. I obviously have behavior on my mind at all times. I live and breathe behavior. And so, the whole social-emotional piece, again, was like a no-brainer for me. It's something that I've always believed in. You know, research shows that EQ is a greater indicator on future success than IQ. And so, I'm constantly working on helping to build self-management, self-advocacy, social skills. I've got an eight-year-old who will also attest to that. But when we, if we can improve social-emotional skills, we can improve socially appropriate behavior. So, it was a no-brainer. And obviously, I was truly invested because if you know me well enough, I'm a big Michigan fan. It was a little painful driving to Columbus so many times. And seeing all of the Buckeye stuff. But I'm really excited that, that they have been finalized and released.
Questions?
No questions, but we really appreciate your, the time you took and the dedication because like you said, you left your kids, you know, a lot of days in the summer to do this. So, we are excited that the state is doing this and we're even more excited that we had three people onboard to help guide them. So, thank you for your time.
Was there anything that, that the three of you or the group wanted to make sure that was in the standards that didn't make it that came out? That you know, that's good. Because sometimes when it gets to that stage, somebody pulls things off or down. Good. That's good. That's good to hear.
That's good.
I don't have a question, but a compliment on the work. You already know where this is going. I can tell. As you all know, we started the SINTS team over a year ago. And it was geared, it is geared towards social-emotional needs, supporting education for students. And with this work going on with the standards, what we were able to do over the course of this past year was to take those standards and help our mental health providers understand the educational framework that they're functioning within, which makes it far more effective. And the grasp of here's what we're trying to aim toward has been phenomenal, hearing our providers across the district saying those kind of things. So, it's really, it's nice to be on the same page and you provided the ability to do that. So, thank you for the work and I think it'll be great moving forward. And a lot of it, basically, are life skills, things they need to learn to be effective no matter what they do or where they go. So, thank you for the work.
And that's also, we continue to hear from our community and all of our community conversations and any other outreach we do is how important it is that our entire community believes in the work you did as well. So, thank you.
And I completely agree. It would be awesome to have all of our buildings VR.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Next internship opportunity.
Some anxiety from the kids.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe some mothers, too.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
All right, thank you so much. If you'd like to join us up front for a photo, we'd appreciate it. That brings us to our first opportunity for public comment pertaining to anything on the agenda. If somebody would like to speak with the board, they may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll go to board reports, policy.
We did not, this month. We rescheduled for next month.
Okay, community engagement. Do you want to, either way, you can start.
Okay, I'll start by passing out the forms that I promised. It's, this is just a basic form. If you guys have an idea for community engage, or for a community conversation, jot it down and send it to one of us. It's not, I mean, they're not like that complicated. There's, it's also on board docs if you run out of that one. Randy sent us all an email, so, of what the coming up community conversations are. There's that September 11th is the chamber. And if you're going to go to the, I'm sorry, September 11th is the district parent council one. It's with district parent council reps and PTA, PTO presidents. The 30th is Ridge Junior. And that's, we were there last year to meet with just students. This is students, staff, parents, teachers, anybody that, anybody in the Ridge community that wants to come. The 11th, October 1st, 11 is the chamber one. Now, for that one, we got an email. You remember that if you want to go to that one, if you are going to go to that one, you need to register just so they know if, have enough food for lunch. It'll start at 11, but the conversation itself won't start till like 11:15 because they'll be eating. October 23rd, Union Elementary, families. And then November 7th, Boys and Girls Club. At 5:30, it's just at the Boys and Girls Club for anyone. And then the 25th is District Finances. And that's at Lakota West. Julie, you want to talk about some of the topics that they're thinking about?
November.
I'm sorry, what?
November.
November 25th, 6:30 in the Lakota West community room. And they'll all be posted online as well. So, we're still continuing with our schedule of two a month, September through May. We didn't do August just because everyone's so busy with back to school. Some future sessions we discussed were as a session with guidance counselors, possibly in December, session with our senior community, one where we were talking about the four Es, and then one on the social-emotional learning standards. And both the finance one and the social-emotional learning standards, we talked about doing, again, like we've done in some of these formats where we have a presentation and then we have the discussion so that there's some learning as well as just conversation.
There's also one that we're talking about doing on culture. This called District Culture. That's just one they threw out there. That's another one they're talking about. You may say something, yes.
Okay. So, some of these are during the day. I mean, obviously, we can't all attend all of them, which is fine. We haven't been in the past. I didn't know if there would be an opportunity or if the rest of the board would be interested in an upcoming work session at some point. I mean, it can be pushed out. It doesn't have to be immediate. But that we just spend like 15 minutes just as a board debriefing the conversations that happen, not going over details or anything like that. But was there anything that stood out, any underlying conversation that we heard? I know we have the notes and we'll get those in the room. It would just be, from my perspective, a great opportunity for the five of us just to say, we had this one. This is kind of what we heard from it.
Could that be on the agendas of our, of all of our workshop, or, yeah, work sessions? Just 10 minutes at the beginning to discuss any community conversations that have happened?
And there may be nothing that we need to discuss, but just having that.
If there is, yeah.
We could, and we have this section on the agenda. So, maybe what you could do under Community Engagement Committee is maybe you could, I don't know, debrief, we had this meeting since the last meeting and your themes. I don't.
I'm, yeah, I'm open. I mean, if the rest of the board finds value in that, that's fine. If there's not value, then I can keep just reading the notes and going on with my merry way.
I don't think that that's a problem. I think that's probably a good idea. I mean, because some of them, like the DPC and the chamber are just traditionally during the day just because of who we're dealing with, the business community and the parent council. But yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? All right, we'll move to next on our agenda, Butler Tech.
A few pieces to report out. This is a copy of the student success story for everyone. Do you know, you say that every time.
I know.
Little things, Linda, it's the little things.
I'm glad that it makes your day, Kelly. We are having the all boards meeting, as you're aware, on October 17th. And that will start at 3 o'clock in the afternoon with tours at different facilities, with student showcases at each one of the campuses. And you have the opportunity to go to one, none, or all if you'd like to. But again, it starts at 3:00. And then you'll have an invitation coming out officially with times and an agenda for you and kind of a tour guide kind of piece about what's going on at each one of the campuses. So, depending on your timeframe, I invite you to do all of those because there are amazing things going on. And we also had, I co-chair the strategic plan committee at Butler Tech. And we had an update last week. It was an hour and a half update. Involved all of our key leadership team and it was a very in-depth look at, are we meeting those things that we've said we're going to meet? So, that was a great conversation. And you'll see some pieces come out of that, I think, in terms of what we look at and programming and outreach and all those kind of things coming up next year. Finally, I'll go right into the legislative report, if that's okay.
Can I mention one thing about Butler Tech? This is really random, but I saw on the front of here they had industrial welding. Gosh, a month ago, my wife and I were at King's Island. And we had gone into one of the little shops or whatever. And one of the girls that was working the register was a student that my wife had in sixth grade attendance. And so, they were just talking and she's in high school now and she's attending Butler Tech. And she was telling my wife how much she loves it and how she's doing welding. And her brother had done welding and that she's just, I mean, the passion on her face and the excitement. And it was just, you walked out of there feeling like, you know, we talk about, on the board all the time, we talk about pathways. We talked about, you know, the strategic plan, the portrait of a graduate, all this stuff. And to actually see that playing out and the fact that our students have so many different pathways and to hear it from that, that girl, it was really, it was really cool.
I am amazed at how many places I go to and someone has a family member or they're the student. But you're right, it's across the entire Butler County region, which is neat to see. It's, it's making an impact.
And one more thing, too, before you move on. I know you and I were at the workforce development meeting that Warren Davidson put on. And I know that Ms. Sage from Butler Tech mentioned that they had 1,200 more kids apply than they were able to take in last year. Because their funding has been capped. And she raised that concern with the elected officials that were in the room. So, just, so we're aware of that there were some challenges with getting more kids to have those opportunities. There's certainly a lot of demand there.
Absolutely.
And we've slid right into the legislative report by doing that. The event held at Miami VOA was all of our regional chambers plus Congressman Davidson's office. It was a great event, a full half a day, looking at not just what are the workforce needs, but what are some solutions on a collaborative basis that we could consider? Great conversation happening. Miami VOA was the host for that. And good conversation. The one missing piece in the room to me would have been to actually have more businesses present at it so that their perspective was heard. And I would say in at least half of the, the solutions that came forward, education was a critical piece to it, talking about traditional K-12, not just career tech, which I thought was interesting as well. And had some conversation with legislators and other community leaders afterwards about, how do we instill more career tech within our tradition? Often, it's Jenny and I alone at those conferences, but it would be great to have, with our kids performing, it'd be great to have everybody there.
So, if you can go, go ahead and get to Melissa so she can sign you up.
It's at Great Oaks, so...
It's very close to us. Yep.
I think the last time we had good representation.
Yeah, I think last time we did.
Did you have anything you wanted to address?
The only thing I wanted to, to mention is our school funding this year, the additional dollars that we are getting are to be dedicated for student wellness and student success. And the way that they're going to send that money to us is in a different format than what we're used to. We'll get it twice a year now. It has to go into a separate fund. You have to have a plan with a partner. And so, we'll be reaching out to write a plan on how we're going to spend those dollars and then we'll have to report at the end of every year how we've spent them. And the other thing, too, that's different is when we get ready to talk about the forecast, this is a switch to the forecast. This will not be included in our five-year forecast either. So, it's just, they're throwing us a curveball with this one. So, more to come.
Matt, do you have anything?
The only thing I have is I'm on the BASSA Legislative Team and we have a meeting Tuesday and usually it's 10 to 12. And we got the edict from On High saying book the whole day. So, there must be a lot of things coming down the pike. So, I'll report back to the board once I know, but that's a week from tomorrow.
We can expect a lot of legislation, legislative activity once they kick back again in Columbus.
Flurry of activity.
It's October, right? Are they coming back in October?
And I think that's in a legislative, except to ask again that you make sure to register for the Fall Conference. I'm sorry. We have one more thing. We, we are meeting with Representative Lang on a number of issues. We'd had that scheduled. We need to reschedule it. So, if we could compare dates at the end of tonight, that'd be great.
Okay. Does he, do he give you dates?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Now, Facilities. Todd and Brad?
We met last week with the Facilities Committee and the architects and a member of the press was there as well as a notice meeting this time. And we looked at the five and 10-year projections of student populations by grade and by building. I think we decided in our agenda meeting that we were gonna take the 23rd work session and do a full briefing to the whole board on where we're standing, what the next step is.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing I would add, and again, a board decision, I would, two things. One, since it's a notice meeting and there are notes that are going to the board, I'm not sure that we need regular updates at the board, but I could be wrong about that. You can let us know about that because most of the stuff that we'll be talking about is stuff that you'll get in writing or in notes. The other thing, too, is we talked about possibly having conversations then about communication as a board. So, when we meet with that work session, communications to the community about why, why we're doing this, why it's important and stuff like that. And bringing Betsy into the conversation to help kind of formulate that, just so that there's clarity around the reason.
We did.
And we're all on the same page.
We did discuss that at the Community Conversation Meeting, that, the Community Engagement Meeting, that when, when it's ready, we should probably plan a community conversation about the facilities. So...
There need to be far more than one.
Right. But, we're not there yet, so...
Yeah, we're far from that.
We're far from doing that.
Yeah, I'm just talking more about just communication to the community about why we even have this committee since it's now noticed and people are going, so what's happening?
Right.
Like, I think that that would be a great conversation for all of us, including Betsy, to have early on in the conversation. Then, when we start to have the conversations around, let's get stakeholder involvement in this, the community involvement. It's not, it's part of the scope of the work.
Right.
A lot of the stuff we're doing right now is really just laying the base. It's going over the enrollment study that you've already been engaged in. Now, it was presented in a different way, so that will be a great opportunity to share with the board some of the visuals that they provided, which was wonderful. But, yeah.
I'd like to disagree just a little bit. I do think we should continue to have a regular update on it. I think this is one of those topics that's really important to our community.
Okay.
And even though we're getting the information, I think that it's an opportunity to regularly update the community on where we're going with it. There's also some specific regulations around a Facilities Committee that require sunshine law and all the rest of those pieces. So, just to be upfront and transparent, I think we should continue to have it at the public board meetings.
I'm not, not opposed to it.
And, and that's public, too, as well. So...
Yeah. Yeah, the community has complete access to everything that's going on with it. I mean, if we want to have an update at the board, I'm not opposed to it all. We can say, yeah.
All right. Moving on to the Safety Committee.
Just two quick things. We have a meeting Wednesday morning, so make sure that's on your calendar. And also, we've had the training for barricades and that's gone very well with our time-saving device in our classrooms. And we've, I've had several staff members ask about locations, other locations for those. So, we're gonna work on that as well.
There are also some legislative, legislative pieces we should consider on those, too, at the state level. So, something to look toward.
Yep. When we meet with Representative Lang, we can bring that up with him.
What is it? What updates are we not on?
There's a piece of law about how these are used and who's able to use them and all that we would like to see adjusted. So, it's worth some conversation.
Oh, I was worried that we purchased all these and all of a sudden there's legislation saying we can't use them.
There's, there's some training components that...
Okay, that's good.
They need to be a little bit more relaxed on.
Cool. I read way too into that. I probably shouldn't have.
We're panicking. We're taking them all out now.
All right. Moving on to New Business. Does anyone have any new business they'd like to discuss?
I would like to bring up another event that I attended and that was an event sponsored by a hospital over at Westchester about cybersecurity. And the Chamber's involved in that, too, and it's about a continuing leadership C-suite series that they're doing. So, this one was on cybersecurity. Keith was there representing us and doing a great job. And we had two of our students that are involved in the Senior Sprint Program that attended this as well. It was a really interesting conversation about protecting your businesses and just about cybersecurity as a growing workforce need over the next five years. So, it was a great conversation. And I want to say thanks to Keith and the students for being there. Lakota was well represented.
So, is that a series sponsored by the hospital? Is that something others could attend on the board or is that a hospital?
I'm sure it's something that goes out through the Chamber. That's how I received it.
All right. Anything else under New Business? Very nothing. We'll move to Treasurer's Recommendations. We have action items A and B, approval of board minutes and approval of the monthly board report. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. This brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, they may do so at this time. All right. Seeing no one, I'll move to closing comments. Start with you, Matt.
I'm good. Thank you.
Same here. I'm good.
Likewise.
I don't, I got nothing.
Actually, I have two things. Number one, I just want to say shout-out to both East and West, the Future Hawks, Future Firebirds Night. That was pretty cool.
It was cool.
To see that amount of kids that are there and the stands were packed. And so, that was, that was a lot of fun and to see the energy at the, at the games. I wasn't at West, but I was at East. I heard West was just as phenomenal. Then, a shameless plug, on October 5th is the Optimist Run for Youth. So, we organized that in collaboration with the run clubs at each of the buildings. And so, it's a great race. We host Plains, it's here at Plains, they host it. We have close to 300 to 500 runners that will be in it, anywhere from early childhood up to the junior highs. So, it's a modified race. So, it gives everybody an opportunity to kind of get out there and have fun and do some awards. So, if you haven't registered, you want to register, do that.
Is it 9 o'clock, Brad? Do you remember? Or is it 10?
I don't remember.
I'm not trying to throw you for a loop. I'm asking for myself.
I, I think it's 9.
9's not right. We'll put something on. Sorry.
I'll be emceeing and Mr. Miller will be handing out awards. So, if that's why you want to come. That's all I got.
Again, in the Workforce Solutions Summit that Linda and I attended, Ohio Means Jobs was there and one of the takeaways I got was that if you work through them, they can help fund posting your job ads on Monster and some of the different, different sites. So, I thought that might be helpful for our community to be aware that they can partner with Ohio Means Jobs on some of those programs. So, it was, again, a lot of great information, a lot of information how you as an employer can sometimes have people who might be reluctant to take on more work because of the benefit cliffs and how we need to think about employment differently today. So, very interesting. But, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's moved. Second?
Second.
Jenny? When she catches up with the computer?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Run for youth is 9:00 AM. Thank you, Mr. Passard for the assist.
Thank you, everybody.